I think you all have the agenda for the hearing today. Again, this year by call to order. We have just noticed that our chaplain, Cissna Hiers, will ask our co-chair of this joint committee who has volunteered to give us few words of praise.
Let us pray. And so, Father, we thank you, we bless you for who you are. We come Lord before you to discuss matters relating to our county, our country, Lord. We ask that you intervene directly so that we can have a resolved and fine solution for the betterment of our country in Jesus' margin.
The witnesses are seated to introduce a cross, and then from there they will be placed on a oath. We start from there. Let us know who you are.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Dendu Parker Weeks-Louis. I'm representing HR. My resources. Where? Arsenal Metal Liberia.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Connor O'Brien. I'm the chief financial officer of Arsenal Metal Liberia.
Good afternoon. My name is Marcus Blair. I'm the head of external administration at Arsenal Metal.
Good afternoon, Chair Als. I'm Mahdouh Van der Merwe. I'm the chief executive officer of Arsenal Metal in Liberia.
Royal and Lafayette Kedins, Minister of Public Works.
William Sebo-Hines, Deputy Minister for Operations, Ministry of Mines and Energy.
Wilmoti, Minister of Mines and Energy.
Consulor Charles D.F. Kambo II, Deputy Minister for Economic Affairs, Minister of Justice.
Anthony Jean Miles, Deputy Minister for Fiscal Affairs, Minister of Finances and Attorney Minister.
Sodaro Mommo Junior, Director General, National Bureau of Concessions.
We now ask the Sajia arm to please place the witnesses on a oath.
I'm James Farid Junior, advisor at Arsenal Metal.
I'm Consulor Boakai Gilas Pega, Head of League of Arsenal Metal.
I'm Seeley Bisswa, the second Director of Concessions, National Investment Commission.
I'm Winston Dahi, Communication Manager, Arsenal Metal Liberia.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Please have your seats. Please have your seats. We will now ask honorably our colleagues, senators, to introduce themselves so that the witnesses will know who have seated before them.
N'Gatwan Nimba.
Senator Thomas Yaya Nimbley from Brangira.
Senator John P. Haye, Senator of Port County, Chair on Economic Affairs and Governance, and Recognition, First Co-Chair on Hydrocarbon, a member of the committee.
I'm the Chair, Grand True County, Nalukwe.
My name is Madou Nukwe. I come from Maggiore County, and I'm a member of the Judiciary Committee for the purpose of this year.
My name is Senator Jimon Smith from Ruwases County. I chair the Senate Committee on Agriculture, Forestry and Fisheries, and am a member of the Concession Committee.
Francis S. Donbouda II, Senator of Ipeji County.
I'm Abraham Daras-Dillon. I chair the Committee on Foreign Affairs and a regular member of the Judiciary Committee for the purpose of this year.
Senator Edwin Snow, I chair the Committee on Hydrocar, Energy and Environment and Culture, Public Works. They give me a member of this joint committee.
I'm Senator Simion Boymantilla from Brangitmore County. Chair the Senate Committee on Mines and Lands and Mines, and co-chair to this joint committee.
I'm Nubelini T. Shvatequa. I represent the company of Crank Crew, Chair on Concession and Investments, currently chairing this joint committee.
We will now ask the co-chair to please welcome, co-chair, welcome the guests and senators to this hearing. Thank you, Chair, for introduction. Don't do introductions. Thank you, Chair, for giving me the opportunity to welcome our guests. So it is time to welcome you all to this joint hearing. The hearing is about the letter that Senator N'Gatwan wrote concerning the escalation of the concentrator plant. And so you are welcome to the present Senate in this place. You refer to all as honorable senators when you are addressing us. You cannot talk across the board except the Chair recognize you before you talk. And when questions are asked, please answer straight to the question. Thank you. Okay. Again, in addition to the Chair, you are all welcome. For your information, hearing ideas are always initiated as a result of concerns senators raise to the Plenary of the Labor and Senate. So we will now ask the secretary to please read a letter of invitation to the witnesses, and then from there we will advise what to next.
The Labor and Senate, last serving twenty twenty five. Honorable Justin P. Kafouan, Minister, Ministry of Finance and Development and Planning of the Labor Bureau. The Labor and Senate, last serving twenty twenty five. Honorable Michelle Van Deel, Nawi. Chief Executive Officer, CEO, Arsenal Metal Labor Bureau, EML, Republic of Liberia. Honorable Nawi, I present my compliments and here with acknowledged receipt of your communication, dated June twenty seven, twenty twenty five, requested the Joint Committee for the restructuring of the public hearing for Thursday, July ten, twenty twenty five, that wish was granted by the Joint Committee. In view thereof, the Joint Committee comprising the Committees on Concession and Investment, Public Works and Rural Development, Public Account, and Audit, would have me to start you again to appear on Thursday, July ten, twenty twenty five, at two p.m. in a Senate chamber, AMEX, as it relates to concerns raised by members of the Senate regarding a large claims of an estimated investment of USD 1.4 billion by Arsenal Metal Labor Bureau, among other things. It is important to note that your appearance and subsequent discussion on matters of concern were for members of the Joint Committee an opportunity in the gain recommendation to Plenary of the Labor and Senate from that informed position. Please be further informed that Minister of Public Works, Rural Development, Mines and Energy, Finance, Development and Planning, Director General of the National Bureau of Concession, the Chair President of the National Investor Commission, the NIMBA Legislative Caucus, the Port Legislative Caucus, and the Grand Pass Electoral Caucus have also been attracted to the same matter and will be in attendance. Please accept a renewal of my highest consideration and esteem. Current regards to Cilel Yaws, Kate Namlo El Seguin, Senior Secretary of Labor and Senate.
Okay. That's the content of the letter of invitation that I extended to the witnesses. We now ask our colleague who raised the concern to the Plenary of the Labor and Senate to please present the case case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the distinguished senators who have come. And we'd like to thank the EML family for showing up. Our astute ministers and head of agencies who have come. Too often in concession areas, our citizens go amok. Things go on the wrong way. They say what is obedience. We are called from Monrovia many times to intervene. Among reasons, out of the concession players are not adequately implementing social development programs. All it has to do with maybe some labor unrest. It is again that background that when many of us got elected, we chose the path for preemptive engagement to bring some of the issues on our control by holding a fit to the fire of concession players while punishing our people to be law-abiding and obedient of civil liberties of all people. We saw in the news an elaborate program attended by government officials of the construction of a processing plant in Nimba County. It is our understanding that that plant should have been constructed far back. But BIDAS May was constructed, and then there was this big news about 1.4 billion dollar investments around here. Whether it was honest or deliberate on the part of EML and the press to state a 1.4 billion investment without disappreciating, whether it is for the plant or it is a total investment, we representing our people in Nimba County needed to move into the study the actual cost of the iron ore processing plant that was built. The reasons are as follows. One, in our lifetime, we have not remember Mita declaring any profit. They have operated according to them on a loss or on an equilibrium since more than 20 years. If such a plant price is that high or that investment is not disappreciated to know exactly which one they will be getting a tax break for or a shareholder, which one will be absorbing our future dividend or profit on, then there's a problem. And so we have to write Plenary to bring Mita, the Ministry of Public Works, Lands, Mines and Energy, and other, you know, agencies such as the Bureau of Concession to authenticate so that today the people of Nimba and Liberia will know how much for that plant, whatever taxes will be absorbing, what are the funding sources a shareholder will need to know if they were loans taken, what are the interest rate on that loan, what might be restored to lose or pay as interest on the loan, and how will it affect any payments in revenue to Liberia. And among other things, we wanted to know the environmental impact of that plant. Many people would know that the Saint John River used to be color as this deck. But thanks be, you know, to some past government, that issue was stopped, and the Saint John re-gain its status. And I think Mita will now taking his own, as opposed to Lamco, directly for whatever processing abroad. Now that a processing plant is here, we needed to know the impact that it will have on the environment. Among other things, we, especially a senator in Nimba County, among other things that were listed in the letter, has to do with violations of the MDA. So we want to list a few here today. And that will also be addressed to the ministers of government to see if their oversight role is being carried out adequately. If you bear with me, anything I say, I'm not a lawyer, and the MDA has a very complex, you know, printout from the different website. And if I don't have a correct copy, I still stand to be corrected. But among those violations, for example, is that one year after the ratification of the agreement in Article 10, in 2007, the three chief executives, the three key positions of Arsenal Metal, the CEO, the CEO, the COO, and the CFO, one of them, according to Article 10, written in black and white, should be appointed. That person should be at a library. Up to present, we still have those three officials as foreign nationals. That is a clear violation. Article 20B. It compels the concession player to build and equip with modern day facilities of health center across the concession area. A senator in Nimba County had done see a modern or modern equipped health facilities within the concession areas. Article B was very clear and almost listed the category of those health materials and equipment that should be in those hospitals and clinics. And today, we stand to be corrected. They are not there. And that is a clear violation. We want to know for Lands and Mines, if the Mineral Development Research Fund is very remitted to the Ministry of Mines to $100,000 every year for research and development in the mineral area. We want to know when a Bureau of Concession, Article 22C, if they have periodic audits of the books of Mita, and how are they reporting seen, not only to the government, but legislative caucuses of the affected counties. Article 23D, these were transfer pricing. And there I will close on this matter and go back to the original major issue in my letter. We have come through our research. Are the reasons why Mita has always reported laws? And it's up for debate. It's the issue of transfer pricing. And Article 23D clearly tells both the government and Arsenal Metal, EML, how to deal with transfer pricing with full disclosure of documentation as to how the pricing have been done in terms of trade. Keeping every paper true because we know fully well that these declarations, sometimes multinationals use them to avoid hard tasking. And one of the issue also has to do with trade misinvoicing. Companies have used this method to deny many countries of dividend. And we believe that the unchecked reports and the unchecked announcement by EML without verifying their invoices and anything they say, that's it. That is why they are not declaring profit because they fix the books. They do the transfer pricing, they do the misinvoicing, and at the end of the day, there are no profit. And as shareholders, we have to have dividend on profit. Without the declaration of profit, then we cannot have dividend. And this is the problem we are faced with today. And we bring this issue so that our line ministers can answer to some of these things. EML cannot address the committee, but we start there for one. There are a lot of other things that we have that are not necessarily, you know, itemized as violations, but they are workful neglects of social responsibilities that EML agreed to do, such as pavement of the Sunny Quilly to Yikiparou, relocation of the G W Harley Hospital, among others. And part of the reasons that they gave for not doing it because they are all on a social corporate responsibility is they come back to misinvoicing and transfer pricing that leads to non-declaration of profit, and then they complain because who knows? You only do corporate responsibility when you make money. But if you complain that you don't make money, then you don't get to do them. So we pause here for one. And then if the need would be, we got a whole lot of documented issues, then we can bring them one at a time. But it is sad that we don't see the EPA here today because that is one thing that is at heart of this discussion that we really want to know whether there were certificates, there were assessment, and we need to be privy to those assessment. And then we also note that by the end of this hearing, it will not just be another hearing, but a hearing at the Ministry of Public Works. And if it is my understanding, I don't know what a concession player are covering, that infrastructure as such must meet the approval of the Infrastructure Ministry, Ministry of Public Works. And if it met, or it is under the concession, whether they waive us in that, but we still need to know. And the establishment of that course with material evidence and invoices verified should be given to this committee to enhance our work for them so that we can establish a proper way in which concession players will serve our people. With that, Mr. Chairman, I yield for now.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, colleague for the presentation. Our witnesses, first, before you come in. Indeed, those are the concerns raised on the floor of the Labor and Senate. This joint committee was instructed to do the appropriate discussions with you and the appropriate agencies of government connected with the operation. And that's why you have been invited. So ministers and heads of other agencies are here. You heard what the complainers said. And you know you are representing us, coordinating the activities of the concession player. So we can now invite them alone without you being present as to why you were invited. You've listened to the issue. You talk about the value of the concentrator that was constructed. You've heard that he said, according to the MT eight, at the most senior management level, three laborers supposed to be appointed by now. One is supposed to be appointed by now. You've heard, he said, the hospital in Nimba supposed to be constructed, developed, at a modernized level. You've heard him talking about the mineral research funds that are supposed to be remitted to the Ministry of Mines and Energy. You talk about, he talk about your books being all irregularly to show transparency and accountability in the level of the operation. He talk about transfer pricing. Those are the issue that he has later. And the Senate has asked this committee to engage you on that. The opportunity is now. Please, maybe our, our co-chair, when he was welcoming you, for those of you that are behind, please, we don't want noise. We want the whole place to be quiet so that we can understand each other. And witnesses. Mr. CEO. Mr. Vanessa. Yeah, the co-chair. Members.
Yeah, so I see a change in the order because we see that the place before us is Mita or Rosi.
Stop proceeding, please. Stop proceeding, please.
Okay. Uh just I hope you guys will help me to maintain our contact with the. Our chairman and members.
Please reduce the levels of your charges. The senator advised you just recently, please reduce the level of your charges.
Our chairman and members of the committee. Members of the Library Senate. And the legislature are large. And to. The three corporates of Bong, Nima and Gran Barso counties. Police from across governments. Uh. It's a time for the opportunity to. Provide important information. That will be required for. Follow actions both by the legislature and if required by the executive. To begin, I would like to firstly state a point of caution. As we are all aware. The government, the execu- executive through the interministerial committee on concessions. Is currently engaged in negotiations with Aslomita Liberia. For the purpose of. The third amendment to the mineral development agreement. And as negotiations go. There are certain information. That is critical to the position of any party to the negotiation. So in this vein. The Ministry of Finance and. Members of the I M C C and other agencies of government who will be participating in this hearing and subsequent ones.
Mister Vanessa.
Yes.
Just a caution. This discussion is focusing on the one that is enforced.
I'm coming. So in that regards, what we discuss here, we have bearings on the final outcome of. Negotiation with meter. So I just want to say that we'll be very circumspect about the detail, the extent to which we provide certain details. So to begin with, we have before us. Uh the request for information from the Library Senate. With respect to the cost of the recently dedicated concentration plants. And also the overall corporate value of Aslomita Liberia. The letter refers to an amount of one point four billion. That amount plus. What could be the corporate value of meter will require. Firstly, getting the balance sheet of meter. And other financial statements. And then they appropriate technical and policy. Staff at very low levels of government will then evaluate that. And come up with a fair assessment of those figures. So in that context. We can only say that in the absence of official information about these things, we cannot make. An informed statement. About the cost of the concentration plant or the actual corporate value of meter because. We just taking hope to be very truthful through the Senate and through the Senate to the librarian people. And. The next thing that we can speak to however is. An official report that we received from meter. And I will speak to two of those. One of them is the amount of. S D F social development funds are being paid. Over a twenty year period beginning two thousand six to two thousand twenty-five. What we have in our possession, which is. And next to one of the reports we received from meter is a total of fifty-eight million. But these two will have to be verified through our revenue records. But what is of some concern. That the Ministry of Finance and other entities of government will want to bring to the attention of. The Senate and the legislature is this. Sometime in twenty twenty. The ministries of finance, internal affairs and Aslomita Liberia sign a M O U. And the M O U require that the company. Will withhold twenty percent of the hundred three million that goes to the three concession countries. So from our point of view, we have some questions which we hope the Senate. And the company can address. According to the M D A, the three million. And as laws go is part of the law, the concession law. And the payment modality is also part of the concession law. So was that now in the cons- of the concession agreement amended? To allow the company to withhold twenty percent. That is a point of inquiry, a point of interest for us. And then the second point, according to the reports that were provided us. For the utilization of the twenty percent from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. The amount of four point eight million was withheld. But the actual project reports. Show two point zero eight six million was spent. So we need to know details, the status of the remaining form, are they committed or tied to procurement or to ongoing project? And so on, so forth. That will require. Two million eight hundred and sixty-one, two millions eighty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-eight. Dollars and a six cents. So I have summarized it to two point eight six million, zero eight six million. So there is more than two million difference between what the company withheld. And what they reported as executed projects. So that will require some, some investigation. And the second and more important one, I mean, other important one is. The legal basis for our M O U, even though it was executed between the company and government agencies. But we also have to know whether the concession agreement call for portion of it to be amended. Or to be changed without going through amendment. As to the. Yes.
Um are you doing an overall presentation or you reading from a script?
I'm reading from my notes.
You don't have presentation for. So someone start guessing of. Keeping the figures recalling the percentage.
So what I can do maybe here after I can present capes of because I took everything from, I'm summarizing from the company's reports.
You are coming for the hearing, you didn't prepare our capes. All these figures recalling the percentages, when are we going to go back to then to know exactly what it is?
Okay, I'm sorry, Senator, but but I mean, I may assume wrongly, I thought the company might also share this with every one of us involved. So.
You are, you are representing us while you have we. Can I check yours against what the company will present?
So the point I'm making now is simply the observed difference in their reports. Like I said from the beginning. Hours and other agencies of government that are stated finance oriented, our assessment. Of the company's overall financial position will tend for now to reserve. Comments on that because we think they are sensitive to various ongoing processes. So but we will speak to what is available to us since the company is here and all of us can then. Listen to them to provide a necessary clarification as will be required.
Continue, please continue.
So then a another point to note is that in their. Report over a five year period from twenty. Twenty to twenty twenty-four. They may, I we are, I'm not the issue of the specific numbers. These are subject again to follow analysis by the tax authorities. And it's a ongoing thing, but there are certain. Connotations that we must correct. For example, taxes and duties and royalties is being described as direct contribution to government. And I think that connotation is wrong. Those are legal obligations. Taxes are levied by law and all economic agents must pay their taxes. Royalties similarly and the social development fund, those are all legal requirements, they are not contributions. So when the company describes it as contributions, I think the context and connotation is a bit problematic. So I will let to stop here for now. And I'm sure there are many persons here on the witness stand and some of them will also have other contributions for me. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Mister Vanessa.
Thank you. Honorable chair of the joint committee. And the distinguished honorable members of the Senate and my colleagues here. I'd like to thank the committee. The joint committee for the invitation. And they help us. As regulators.
Do you also have presentation? You, you, you have everything, something to do there to present.
Yeah, we have a presentation, but we don't have many copies. The meter, the Aslomita M D A. Contains about forty-one different obligations and responsibilities. A portioning those obligations to the parties, to government and to A M L. Our responsibilities total about fifty. And then A M L has about twenty-six. Obligations. What we have done in the Ministry of Mines and Energy in collaboration with. The M D C and all the relevant players. Is. As we receive reports from Aslomita on a quarterly basis. And taking their own annual reports into consideration. We have been able to develop. A make a, a, a matrix, compliance matrix. Which we have all agreed upon that we are using to corroborate what they present. In their reports. Against what the terms and conditions of the mineral development agreement are. And in that way, it helps us. As of this day. As we speak up to the review, internal preliminary review, we have done. Metas own reports and what we are being able to identify as to us that they have been able to ship. More than a little over sixteen million metric tons and most of it is. B S O, meaning direct shipment O, more than ninety percent of it is about direct shipment O. On the issue of. Employment and I will speak to that honorable members of this committee. Because everything we are talking about also they are linked one way or the other. It will be unfair if we don't address it. So what we have done also in collaboration with other relevant agencies is to look at the last. Five years. And from what we have done. As far as our preliminary assessment is concerned, there are gaps in implementation. For example, in year fourteen, which is twenty twenty. We, from the own report that they submitted. We have seen that. They are, they are behind schedule in terms of achieving. The employment obligation targets within the M D A, I would like to say that. Same as year fifteen, which is year, which is twenty twenty-one. We also have been able to establish. That the A M L in compliance with the employment obligation as set forth in the agreement. Is behind and is able and were able to identify that and our comment is that. The company feel in as far as compliance is concerned. And we are looking strictly at. Records that they have submitted to us and we are assessing it jointly. And if there's any comment to that effect, they will let us know. And we, when we do our assessment, the plan is to engage them. Or want to be able to, we want to do a comprehensive. Because last year, we decided to launch a complete comprehensive review of all licensed holders in the country. So we decided to begin with Grand B and exploration licenses which we completed. Because we knew that M D As have, have a lot more we needed to consider. We decided to treat the M D As last and that's what we are doing because there are other M D As that we have, some of which. Exist on our records, but they are not active. So we have to approach it that way. On the issue that the Minister of Finance just uh informed us about regarding the. Social corporate responsibility withholding of twenty percent, we have not been able to. Identify any records within the Ministry of Mines and Energy that that also was, you know, it has, it happened. Now, if it did happen, then it was also a misstep that the ministry. Which has a critical role to play, such as the Ministry of Mines and Energy, would have been left out in a consultation. We just wanted to, to make that point. On the other query. Containing this. The purpose for which we are here, which Senator trying to raise regarding whether the. Mineral Development Fund, the research fund is remitted to the Ministry of Mines and Energy. Honorable senators, we can say to you here, the Ministry of Mines and Energy does not receive any such fund. It's a happy, we have not been able to come across any such record. Now let me go to the plant. The processing plant. The processing plant, it is fair to inform you. And what we are hoping to engage A M L on is when you know when you commission a plant. Then a plant is, is that you are saying that the plant is now in operation. And so while we are interested in a sense, the plant is commissioned, we have to know the production. Then we'll be able to know what is that and that information we will hope that Aslomita will be able to give to us. But the reports that we receive from them, or at least we have been receiving from them, have no, have no indication. About the cost of the plant and all of that. And I, but from our own assessment. From our own observation, I think it's fair for us to inform the, this body. And the public that that plant has not been completed, construction work is not completed. We have to let this body to know that. So. So. But it is a good thing, it is a good development for us. As such a plant is being constructed. Albeit, you know, in the latter part of the concession life, lifespan. But what we are seeing is what we are interested in, we want a plant to work. And we want the operation to be strictly in line with what the terms of their email are anyway. Because my other colleagues are here, the National Bureau of Concession is here, we will be able to. And the figure we gave is just for the five years, the, the whole shipment we gave, the whole. Figure we give, the iron whole shipment we gave is for the five years that we have been able to preliminarily. assess based on reports that we have received. Yeah, there's sixteen million, the total. That's from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five, including but includes one to one of twenty-twenty-five. It includes twenty-twenty-one, but what we are doing, and the reason we are giving this figure here is because we took off to tell you nothing but the truth. But these figures that we are giving are subject to further verification. So that in the end, we can have a data that we say, yes, this is verified. This, as I said earlier, what we are doing is still preliminary. But we, it will be unfair if we didn't share our initial observations with you.
Thank you, Mr. Minister, thank you very much. The major issue was on infrastructure. Minister of Public Works was invited.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the invitation, members of the committee. We are happy to to be here, and other senators are that are here. You know, the Ministry of Public Works, like you know. Is responsible overall for all infrastructure investment in the country, whether it is vertical or horizontal infrastructure development. I like to say that I don't know whether the concession agreement, I have seen that in the concession agreement. Whether it gives Asalometa the full authority to construct without the Ministry of Public Works authorizing their construction. And let me say that I am also a little disappointed that we set up at the Ministry of Public Works, the infrastructure working group, the rural infrastructure working group. And that group brings together all of the concession, the concessionaires around the country that are constructing uh facilities within the concession area, whether it's housing or any other construction that should take place. And of course, that gathering has been very successful with the cooperation from other concessionaires, I will name them. Asalometa has never attended the meetings, we've sent them invitation to those meetings. They have not attended meeting, and I have been received any reason why. Whether it's deliberate or not, maybe they can see so. But they have not cooperated, we've had other concessionaires that have come to the meeting and submit. And also submit drawings for any construction that is taking place, whether housing construction, whether they are doing rural rehabilitation, that has not happened. Since I became Minister of Public Works, I visited Asalometa once. We spoke about the rural construction, especially rural from Kanta to Sanikori, which they done. And my conversation was about the second phase. I know that project was a joint project between the government and we were in Asalometa. Because I was Deputy Minister of Public Works when we put up the first disbursement for that project to start. Uh because Asalometa could not do that uh at the time because of the slum empires of old. And I remember we did that because C S E that was providing the construction uh ability for that project. Got to the point where the government would have been held responsible, either, you know, because of the government inability to provide the funding since we signed up on the project. So I went to have a conversation about what do we do about phase two. Of course, they said that's something that they were reviewing. I also raised the issue about other construction works that were taking place and that we expect that Asalometa will participate in those engagements. But let me say that Asalometa has not done so. Secondly, on the construction of the plant, our records at the Ministry of Public Works are asked. Show nothing of the submission to the Ministry of Public Works. So we have no idea about the drawings of the plant, for example. And I know there is the issue of the cost, we won't know that because there was no full authorization given uh for the construction of the plant. So uh with what is done within the concession area, we don't know. I also visited Yekepa uh to look at the infrastructure internally, that is the road network, the hospital facility you spoke about, and some of the housing facility. And I will be frank to this, uh that I'm disappointed. We have to do more, Asalometa has to do more. I think they are investing more in the economic infrastructure to just extract the resources, but do not want to invest in the social infrastructure that support the lives of the people who are in the concession area. So we need to do more as a government. And I think this gathering and bringing Asalometa to speak to this is important. And I think as we are going into, in my mind, a tear amendment of the agreement. Some of those things that should have been done, especially for the infrastructure development, on a night concession should be done or must be done. Before we go as a government to go into any agreement of such. I think we should do so. And I will say it again openly that I hope Asalometa can respect our letters, inviting them to those meetings. Because the other concessionaires attend the meetings and they subscribe to the things that we do with them. For approving all the constructions that they do in the construction area, all the rule works that they do. They all comply, but Asalometa has been not compliant, let me say it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Minister, thank you. Uh we, while the minister was in flight. Uh the colleague of ours just arrived. Colleen, could you just introduce yourself so the witnesses will know you? If there's anybody that came in, has not introduced.
Who? I am Somwe Gomwengkuga, Senator of Nima County.
Senator Bessinger Milton Finley, Senator of Granbas County.
Good, thank you, thank you.
Two.
Senator Jusamjala, Member of this company, Ropan County.
Senator Amara Connor, Senator from Bablu County.
Okay, thank you. Considering that there is a legal instrument that we are discussing. A partnership, legal partnership between M A L and the government of Liberia. And that is why we ensured that the Ministry of Justice was invited. Mr. Minister, please excuse us.
Good afternoon. Honorable Chair and Honorable Co-Chair, distinguished senators. I must first express the regret on behalf of the Attorney General for being unable to come today. So he asks for your forgiveness, that he will honor the next invite once the time is okay for him. On that note, a lot has been said, this has to do with compliance. As you may know, the Ministry of Justice. Yes, Ambassador. I think Chair of the Cabinet. The Attorney General is the I T Chair of the Cabinet. All right, thank you. The Ministry of Justice's role in this is a little different. We are part of the I M C C. But unless a review is done by the M D C and the Ministry of Finance and Development Planning and the principal sector agency, which is the Ministry of Mines and Energy. And issues are presented there from before we can actually take action at the Ministry of Justice. Never matter who arrives, the only time we will respond to move is if a crime is being committed. If a crime is committed or been committed, M O J will swiftly move to intervene. So unless a complaint is presented to us, like in the current case. Two of my colleagues mentioned about utter amendment being honor reviewed, we are participating in that, so. Nothing has come to us yet, and I think when we dialogue with the M D C, they told they have done review up to their current of the twenty-twenty. Twenty-twenty-one to now is currently honor reviewed, so nothing is, we are not aware of anything yet. On one of the issues Minister Myers spoke about. We have a similar view on another thing that was presented in a prior engagement with the House of Representatives. Some stuff proposed by A M L. The senator who proposed or who proposed the request that is leading to this setting today. Mentioned about hundred thousand dollars research fund, mineral development research fund that should have been remitted to the Ministry of Mines and Energy. Similarly, honor the same M D A. A fifty thousand dollars fund supposed to be paid annually to the University of Liberia for what, geology, for the geology department. What we, what was presented, I think it was something as you were last week. We noticed there was an M O U that was executed between the University of Liberia, the Ministry of Education and the Nima County Community College. Instead of the fifty thousand dollars being paid to the Uni- the University of Liberia for the geology department. An honor standing was reached through that memorandum of honor standing, and that money is now going, is supposedly going to the what, the Nima County Community College. The question there is, is that an amendment to the M D A? Technically, I would say yes. Because it after extending provision, ensuring in the M D A. The M D A directed that this money will be paid to the University of Liberia for the Department of Geology. Not to the Nima County Community College. The intent is not only to develop geologies that are in Nima County, no, that's not the intent. The University of Liberia was the one the fund was intended for. So if a change should be made to that provision. Then I think you ratify this agreement. Further consultation should have been had. So that's an observation, so just similar to what Minister uh how you call it, Minister Myers alluded to, so I just wanted to bring that, but. So our role here is kind of like limited for the for the purpose of today. This is of course a legal instrument, so I would please beg your permission to use at this time. It did not come with a presentation.
So, but the issue of the university was presented to you.
It was an observation, it was an observation. Yeah, just wanted to flag, it says you, it is a holistic thing.
Thank you, thank you.
A specific question is addressed to us that require a response as the Ministry of Justice will. Thank you. The M O U was executed between the University of Liberia, the Ministry of Education, the Nima County Community College, and of course, I think the A M L might have had. It was part of it. It was part of it. It was, it was part of it. It was part of it, stay on, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, uh, Mr. Minister. We also invited N R C, the National Investment Commission, that chairs the I F C C. That gave proof to this agreement. N R C.
Thank you very much, uh, Honorable Senator. For the purpose of introduction, again, I need to say, would I guess what is second. I'm the Director of Concessions at the National Investment Commission. So to begin with. I would like to extend greetings from my chairman. Who is absent today because it was extended an invitation to travel with the president to Washington, D C. But as you know. The N R C. Uh. It is not within the N R C scope to conduct post-concession uh compliance review or monitoring activities. So it is within the spirit of coordination because the N R C chairs. The concession and compliance, I mean, committee on concession. It is within that spirit that the N R C has covered. But I'm just a director, the chairman would have loved to be here. He will come to see you when he comes back, when he is not here, and so he had just asked me to.
I think you just and appropriately that he did, the chair is not here, so they don't have.
Much.
As I say, it's not in your scope, it is in your scope, you need to be informed. After what you are giving or to see after what they made with compliance.
The chairman, the reason I raised the concern, you put it all on hold. So they, they have a laptop on the chair, just to meet to come before they hear. But if we are on hold, you put them on. As the authority of N R C here understand. Why can't he come and say?
Okay, so we will now revert to the N R C and the M D C, the National Bureau of Construction, that is responsible to follow up on compliance.
Mister Chairman of the Joint Committee, distinguished uh members of the Liberian Senate and members of the Joint Committee. Recognize my own Senator from Bablu, Senator Connor. I'd like to thank you and Senator Magir also.
Correction? I've not said that, Connor, so if you want to recognize, you put on his Senator Connor, sorry.
Okay. Senator Connor, I'm sorry.
Colleen, please, please, please. Please, please. Please. Gara Gara, please, continue, continue.
Thank you for the attention. According to us. Members of the I M C C. To be here today to provide the Senate with information it needs to strengthen its oversight, particularly with the Asalometa Mineral Development Agreement. Mineral Development Agreement. We talk over authority of the National Bureau of Concession. In August of twenty twenty four. A major review of the work processes. And the comply. Revealed that in twenty twenty one. The National Bureau of Concession conducted. Safe compliance monitoring of the AML. The report found that AML. Was in compliance in some areas. What other? Partial compliance.
Yeah, please look at it, man.
Better still. In the last category. It was in non-compliance. And these categories. Centered around environmental issues, very serious environmental issues, including water pollution. Housing, infrastructure. And labor matters in the form of employment. The. Compliance team then recommended very critical and specific actions. For Ashla Metal to conform to. The compliance of its agreement. So between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty three. Both institutions, the AML and NBC. Engage in follow-up mechanism. The compliance draft report. The distinguished members of the Senate. Is like a draft audit report. The findings are normally sent back to the entity. To make an official response. And after the entity does make the response, then there is an engagement. To verify and validate the information. Before it become a final report. That is transmitted to the National Legislature. And the Office of the President. For enforcement. During the back and forth period. Where NBC. And AML. Conducted this engagement. Ashla Metal. In the period on a review. Issue its own compliance report. That was different from the engagement exercise. When they did so. The NBC insisted. That it would not honor. A self-compliance report in the absence of a joint validation of. All of the compliance issue particularly raised in the report. And those compliance issue. The NBC insisted. Should be attended or should have been attended to by. All members of the IMCC, particularly. The Ministries of Mines. The Ministries of Public Work. The LRA. EPA. And other governmental institutions. That joined the current on the compliant exercise and assist. The National Bureau of Concession. Following that. The report has not been completed. Because that joint verification exercise. That to validate, confirm some of the findings. Has not been completed. Up to date as we speak. So there is a draft report. That the. National Bureau of Concession has in its possession. Is available. Covering major compliance issues. That still need to be verified and it centered around finite. It centered around a whole lot of issues that are inscribed in the. Mineral Development Agreement. Have we had the necessary funding available to us? We would have completed the exercise by now. To have an informed position. To the National Legislature. On the compliance status. Of the AML. As I report to you. There is now the situation that we saw following up. In the Yekapa and affected community region. That has to do with water pollution. We commissioned. A water testing exercise that has been completed. That report is now finding its way to. Heads of ministers and agencies that are concerned with the exercise. So that we can be able. To validate the findings of that committee. Of the agency. And report to the Liberian government. Through the Senate. And the Office of the President. Ashla Metal has responded to the report. Of the water testing issue. It has even suggested further. That a second round of testing be done. In order for us to verify. The already existing report before us. Our contention is that that report. As is, but first of all, be. Brought forward to the heads of ministry, the agency and the affected community with their leaders. So that they be aware that something. Has been done, that government has taken a position on this report. And together with the stakeholders, we can now agree on evaluation process. Because there are very critical findings in that report. About us around the health of the people. The community safety. And very other critical environmental issue. We are informing stakeholders about that report. And pretty soon, we intend to convene a stakeholder meeting here in Monrovia. Another stakeholder meeting will take place in Nembah. So that we all can find a way forward. To be able to get the actual fight, the validation of the report. And bring it forward for Isha because of the. Critical nature of the findings and recommendation. So far, at the National Bureau of Concession. This is a picture of the AML. There is a draft report. That has been prepared. Um. Covering two thousand five to twenty twenty one. What is left out is for that report to be validated. And it and it will be brought forward to members of the Senate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mister Director. AML. CEO. It was highly appropriate. That all of the. Ministers and officials that think with you. Make their presentation so that you know. The thinking of everybody. And I think we want to thank all of them for their own observation. You are now presented the opportunity to respond to all that you've heard. Thank you.
Good, uh, Honorable Chair, Mister Batikwa, thank you very much. Honorable Senators, Members of the Committee. Uh, Honorable Senator, Chairman, Ministers. And all. Uh. Distinguished. Conference guests, persons observed. Thank you for getting us here today, it's for myself personally, a huge honor uh to be here. I've brought along some of my most senior colleagues to assist with. Getting more of those detailed explanations out. And there's a good reason for that. This year, if you'll allow me a minute of setting context and background, Chair. Marks our twenty year celebration of Ashla Metal being in Liberia. Personally, I haven't been here for the full twenty years. Coincidentally, it was just my one year celebration last year, but I take full, uh, not, uh, yesterday, my apologies. But I take full responsibility and ownership on behalf of AML for what has happened over the past twenty years. As we speak today, our operations, I'm only talking operations, not the project and people who are working there. I am employing circa two thousand nine hundred people. When I sleep at night, I'm based in Yekapa, very close to the operations, this three thousand people. Mostly from Nembah, but also from other counties around the country. Uh. Are running our plants and operations and in line with the values of our company and my own personal values. We love and care for these people. They are also the same people that. That you represent, that's voted you into where you're sitting right now today. So I believe in a sense, we are representing the same people. And therefore, it's with. Honest, humble respect that I come to this table today to answer these very valid questions. Uh. I'd like to say that. I'm not gonna sit here and pretend that Ashla Metal has done everything one hundred percent correct and that we are where we wanna be. I'll be the first to admit that after twenty years in this country, there's been several setbacks. Uh, we've gone through a stage where we started with some infrastructure had to be. Built and constructed before we could even start thinking of mining. Uh, into a stage where Ebola stopped everything that we could do. We've been through with everybody else sitting around here through COVID, we've been through several economic downturns. And it's true, Minister, you are right, it's true, honorable senators, that we have started a long time ago. With our plans to invest more and construct our beloved concentrator plant. Which is arguably one of the biggest, well, not even arguably, definitely the biggest project for us in. The entire Ashla Metal. I can tell you that is our most important project in the group, that we've all been looking for getting this in commission. It's a massive, massive project, it's something that we are all emotionally and heartily proud of. That's why we would have liked to have more of our. Senior people come around and just come and see. Just come and see what you're doing there. Just come and see the impact and the scale of what's happening in Nembah County there. It's it's enormous. In a big project like that. Where you spend literally billions and we'll get now to the details of the numbers and hopefully I can. Try and explain or scratch some of the. The surface of of what you'd like to investigate or ask about there. Uh. You are probably not every day gonna get everything right one hundred percent. But the context of what I've come through here today, and I say that with a. With a warm heart and an honest feeling of. Uh transparency, is that the intent of Ashla Metal in Liberia. From when they've started until now is good and is honest. If it wasn't, I would have would not have been sitting here, that I can tell you with open, clear conscience. Uh. So I'd. I'd like to answer every single question here in detail, I'd love to. But I'd also. Like to plead with you to understand the context of what we are doing here. If I sit here and nitpick every small little thing that we've overstated, you can easily sit here for three days and debate yes or no. It will take forever, but I'd also like you to at least consider the context and the intent of what we are doing and where we are going and the impact. Of what Ashla Metal has done and are going to do and planning to do on the people of this country. The three thousand people in operations that we employ, another four thousand in projects right now. And some of the benefits which has not been mentioned and highlighted, which they are actually bringing to the country. So I just I like like to highlight a few of those as well. Uh. I'd like to uh maybe start off with with the some of these issues, I think the first one that. Uh, honorable jurors mentioned was the validation of the money that we said we have. Spent on the face too. So with my colleague sitting next to me, there's lists and lists of documents, I. Would have had to kill a lot more trees to print everything if we had to bring every single thing down here, but I'd like to. Plead for your indulgence to and patience to let us understand more of exactly what is required, if there's. If there's mistrust in something that you think you wanted to give to you. There's no reason for me or for any of my colleagues to try and hide anything that we're doing here. Our intent is good. That we get always everything right, probably no. But the intent is good and I'd like us to focus more on what we want to do going forward, rather than to try and that we can find some small things that. May potentially not have gone well in the past, we are where we are now. Having said that, one thing that's very close to my heart is, I just wanna mention, uh, in terms of what we're doing to. The environment and the people around. I tell you here now for sure. In my personal context, that if I felt for a moment. That this company is doing anything, not even deliberately. To harm the environment and that we are in any form or way polluting or. Causing danger or harm to people and their environment, again, I'm telling you, I would not have been here. Depending on how the story has been told. That. It's very difficult to do any sort of mining or processing without some level of impact on the environment. I just wanna set a little bit of context in saying that whilst we acknowledge everything that's been said, and I don't think there's anything that's. Unfairly asked for being said, and therefore, I'd love to clarify some of that. If you talk about pollution, it sounds like poison and chemicals going into the rivers and the water streams. The very rivers and water streams I want me with my people to drink from, I drink it, I make a point not to drink bottled water. Welcome to come and visit me in Yekapa and Tokare and see how we do it there. If we talk about the stuff that has not gone well. We're talking about Ecoline sewage that's gone into the rivers. That is mostly stuff that we come to find here and trying to fix it. Not going to deny that it's there. But a lot of this stuff is stuff that we come to find where we operate in our concession and we're putting in massive, massive progress to put in. Three and plants, feeding it, giving clean drinking water to the communities. Which this stuff is mostly not, not mostly, I don't understand, not the result of the operation, so that's some of the context. It's true that where we're mining some of the turbidity of the water makes it brown and we are putting a lot of emphasis and effort on all the catchment dams. But the kind and nature of our operations is mining ore. For that, you have to take the topsoil away, no doubt. Mining ore, processing that in a plant which is mostly gravity concentration, we're not adding chemicals to the process. These chemicals getting in our screens and stuff, but that's not a, we're not adding cyanide, we're not adding mercury, we're not adding. It's not a environmentally pollusive process that we're running. The the process that we're running is environmentally friendly. And that's how we're gonna continue to make sure that we care after the environment. And that's how we're gonna continue to make sure that we care after the environment. Having said that, there are areas in the concession and around us that we'd like to see a lot more being done, and we are going to do it. I'm going to get carried away now with all of the uh CSR stuff, so before I do that, maybe just, honorable Chair, thank you for your patience in letting me set a little bit of context and background. Maybe move to the uh the first item in terms of the, the one point four billion uh being spent. So in that, uh I think we've also answered, we've given you some limited documentation in terms of the answers, because I wasn't hundred percent sure of some of the context of the questions that have been asked. So I think there's been some documents distributed. But in addition to that, AML has spent one point two billion as at thirty one December twenty twenty four on our phase two expansion project, since it resumed the project in twenty twenty one. Ashelaw Metal Group has published to its investors, shareholders, and its public filings that it will spend one point eight billion to construct the phase two expansion project for Ashelaw Metal Liberia. The amount spent by AML and the project are comprehensively audited by both statutory auditors and the uh LRA.
LRA, is what I said, yeah.
Liberia Re- uh Revenue Authority, I believe. AML is able to vouch and provide support for every dollar spent on this project. And I'm reading that from a script which I wrote because I didn't wanna get these numbers wrong. That's the only reason. So AML would like to understand more of the nature of the allegation of the inflation of corporate value. Because we've seen no evidence that's been provided to substantiate this specific allegation. Uh that's basically what I can say on the one point two million that has been spent up until thirty first of December and our forecast of one point eight million, uh which we had billion, my apologies.
As, as you know, so it's, you, you are saying that uh the information, the declaration was one point four, what you are saying is one point two?
The one point two, uh honorable Chair, was as at thirty one December twenty twenty four. So the one point four would have reached a stage somewhere between thirty one December twenty twenty four uh onwards, until we finish the phase two expansion. If you'd allow me, uh Chair, I'd like to refer to my Chief Financial Officer to add a bit more granularity on that.
Yeah, before you go to him, there one point two billion you're talking about, was it millions to, to be all the concentrate of money? Is that what you're talking about, or the entire work?
Uh honorable, the one point two billion, the con- the phase two consists of the concentrator plant, I'd say mostly, but also all other infrastructure that goes with, with the phase two development to get to a fifteen million ton per annum concentrator plant being constructed and getting that product down to the port.
You just uh, you said a lot of things that you've been concerning the, including the concentrate of plan, total of one point two billion, right?
Correct.
Or you, could you just mean one or two of those things that came with the concentrate of plan, the amount of money to one point two billion, please?
Sure, I, I can tell you technically as engineer, but for the financial side of it, I'd love to just refer to my Chief Financial Officer sitting here on now that's been accounted.
This hearing needs a proper perspective, because I, I don't know, there were specific issues raised by the Senator of Nima County. What are you spend eighty billion? One of the issues he raised, the public work, the infrastructure ministry, were they part of your infrastructure? As per your concession, this, this, this is the government arm that is responsible. Your twenty billion you spent, when come to audit, we'll talk about that. Did you respect the rules in our country to get the infrastructure ministry involved in your infrastructure work? We want to know that. We talked about healthcare delivery. You keep emphasizing on how much you spend and how much job, we know, that's why we give you concession to provide jobs. So let's go to specific, as, as, as mentioned or laid down by the, by the, by the honorable Senator, or the distinguished Senator for Nima County, please.
Thank you, honorable Senator. I believe that was a different issue which we yet to get to. So if you'll just allow me to finish the first point that's been raised on the one point two, as that's a different issue that we'd like to deal with separately. May I please request that my CFO assist with the explanation on the breakdown of the one point two?
No, it's a, that one I gave you, that one he's responding, I sustain. Let's, so, Colleen, the major uh five, uh foremost concern was the cost of the concentrator, and that's why he was commenting on. So all the others are outlined, you have to come to them, but the only thing is, I want you to please uh be concise and just to the point, so that uh you can be interactor with by senators.
Acknowledged, thank you, honorable Chair. My, my country, refer to my with respect, honorable, I, I want to get back to that point as well, and I wanna give it a due attention. Allow me to get back to that in, in good time, please. Honorable Chair, my country requests you to refer to my CFO. My answer that
So, so, so even if you refer to him because he's also honorable, if there's any addition that you want me to make, just briefly, you can indicate it and work on to the other issues.
Okay. Thank, thank you, honorable Chairman. Um I would just like to make
The indicator that you spent up to last year, one point two, and it's up to one point four, you indicated one point four at the time you get going the dedication. How you win there, that's how he wants you to comment on.
Um maybe I, can I just give some context, so just to come back to the other question that was asked in terms of the phase two expansion projects that we referred to. It includes the concentration plants that we're constructing in Tokara Day, it includes the investment of the port, it includes the mine development, it includes the railway, it, it, it's all encompassing to make the entire project work and reach, reach the target milestone um of what the phase two was set out to do. So I hope that that clarifies what was still So this, I, I would now like to answer that. So the initial project of phase two was for fifteen million tons per annum production level, and that investment was one point four billion dollars of a project.
Is it up to the time you
The dedication?
No, 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 Mr. Chairman. So one point four billion is what the forecasted cost of the entire phase two project was initially. That was one point four billion.
You are still one point two, right?
We had spent one point two billion as of thirty one December twenty twenty four, and we are forecasting that we will spend one point eight billion by the end of the project, because we are now increasing the volume of ore that will be shipped and produced each year to twenty million tons per annum. So we're moving from fifteen million tons per annum to twenty million tons per annum. I believe the original phase two plant was conceived in twenty thirteen. We resumed production of the project in twenty twenty one.
I give them the task, let them finish their presentation, then we can engage them.
Okay, so what I would just like to add is, in, in terms of the one point two billion that has been spent as of um December twenty twenty four, that has been spent across equipment and material, which is four hundred and sixty seven million dollars. We have construction contractors of two hundred and forty five million dollars. We have freight and logistics of a hundred and four million dollars, and we have set up an indirect cost of four hundred and five million dollars. The total of one point two two one million dollars, billion dollars, my apologies. The construction contractors is two hundred and forty five million dollars.
I think that's the, I remember you want me to make, so can you continue?
Thank you, Chair. I think you realize now why the financial guy had to explain a bit more detail of that, so thank you for allowing me to, at my seat, I'll talk to that. If this, can I move on to the Liberian appointments, or is there anything you'd like me to come back to on?
So, 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 so you have listened to the No. Please, go ahead and connect all of them and we'll do the issue.
Thank you, honorable Chair. So another point that was raised, as I made my notes when you said there was uh in terms of the compliance of the MDA to the appointments that we've made, in terms of the Liberian state or the Liber- Liberian portion or local, local portion in our management team. Uh so currently, uh honorable Chair, honorable Committee, my management team consists of twelve people, including myself. I've got the names and the positions here, and as we speak, yeah, we, we're sitting now, exactly fifty percent. Six of these people are local Liberian people, and six of these people are uh foreign nationals or expatriates like myself and corner over here. I believe that is compliant to the MDA. It's a minimum compliance, but at this stage it is compliant. So honorable Chair, if you just like, I'd, I'd like to really express the company's view and my, my own personal
There was a specific position that Senator Yantuan mentioned as the MDA. Yeah, please.
So, Mr. Yantuan, uh, sir Yantuan, you indicated a specific position.
Um, uh, Mr. Chair, so the CFO.
CFO?
No, let's start over. The CEO, the CFO, and the CO, which is the Chief Operating Officer. The MDA mentioned then clearly, that it contained that one of them, after three hundred and sixty five days of that amendment in two thousand and seven should be a Liberian. It's unambiguous.
Those four?
Those three.
The three, I mean.
One of them must be a Liberian after three hundred and sixty five days. It is there unambiguously written.
Mister, sorry, honorable Chair, honorable Senator uh Dweh, I, I do not believe that it's in the MDA exactly the way it is there. If it is, I'd like you to to either show me or quote that. It does talk about
Uh, one minute, so, uh, sir, why he's looking for the position? Your chief, your CEO?
Yes.
CFO?
No, that is not, the MDA does not state those positions.
You're the first three officers at Ashelaw Metal since uh twenty oh seven to date. Do we have any Liberian, Liberian in the first three ranking officers at Ashelaw Metal?
Honorable, I don't believe the MDA speaks of the three as being CFO, CFO.
You talk, please. Uh you, why you don't believe is not the same as what is. Because you don't believe is an evasive way of now responding to the question. So if you don't believe the MDA says so, it's different from the MDA does not say so. It's English. So what you're answering, does the MDA say so, or the M, or you don't believe the MDA says so?
Honorable, since I'm under oath, for me, that's the same. So the MDA does not say so.
Uh-huh, now you're calling, so then the owner is on the center to show the provision.
He talks about three positions, he does not name it. So
But, but, uh, Colleen, you have the provision? Okay.
Sure. So honorable, the intention, yes, instead of having three big positions, we've expanded it. There's twelve big positions there.
Okay. Uh
Article ten um which is the amendment to the article ten of the MDA employment and se comment. The text in this section, employment of article ten of the MDA is hereby deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. The concessionaire shall not import on skill labor into the republic subject to availability. The concession, the concessionaire shall employ qualified Liberian citizens for skill, technical and administrative managerial position in accordance with the schedule attached here to as a penalty G. Yeah. The concessionaire shall ensure, subject to availability, within five years of the amendment effective date, twenty five percent of senior management position at the concessionaire should be held by citizens, increasing to fifty percent within ten years and of the amendment effective date, no later than three hundred and sixty five day that of this amendment, the concessionaire, the concessionaire shall appoint a Liberian citizen to one of the top three management positions of the concession.
Of the three, do you have a Liberian as indicated in the FBA?
So honorable, my interpret, our interpretation of this, they are not only three, they are twelve senior positions. It does not qualify the three. The word CEO, CFO does not stand anywhere in that.
Okay, we agree, we agree. Once a first three ranking official are, has to be a Liberian.
Well, the, the No, no, no. Abay, Abay, please. So
Sir, what's the problem? Was the first three ranking?
Let me answer, please. I got it. So the first three with the I'm standing at the rest of sounding arrogant, but the CEO is the one, I would guess. Uh I would argue that my HR manager would be one of the top three, which employs everything and everybody on that.
Hello, why you asking me?
Hello?
Could you give us a you tell her why you asking?
Hello?
Ask it back, ask it back, ask it back, Colleen. Why they are going back, why they are going back of the, of the continent? It was answer the question. Where is the continent a common back? Eh?
I, I can draw, I can call it to you right here now.
You have it? Please, good. So would I be
My observation here is that in this hearing, you use your gavel, use your gavel to allow the senator to read for what he term as his fact. You should have used that same gavel for this CEO to read for his facts.
Yes.
Then he bring it and it and give it here and read for us here. You have to read it, G for us. That is our vision, man.
Sustain. Mr. CEO, you have listened to a senator Mr. CEO, you have listened to a senator reading from his facts. Please, in line with the organigram, me the first three most senior officials of the organization, of, of, of your company.
Honorable Chair, with respect, they are not see, myself is sitting as the CEO on top and there are eleven people on the same level below me. That is our organogram. That's published like that, it's in every format like that. I can refer to my HR, head of HR, I can refer to anybody here. That is how my organogram looks.
So, point of information, Mr. Chairman. The foremost of this MDA knew that a situation that dates were occurred. That's why they disaggregated the management from the top three executives. They don't even, they didn't call them management. You call them the top three executives. So, your management structure is there. You've already said you comply, even though our research shows that as of now, you should have fifty percent of your, of your management as Liberian. You got forty-two percent, but yet still you are running that up to fifty percent. I cannot agree that until we validate that. But what that can, what can be validated here is that one of the top three people should have been a Liberian. And we all know, you know, Mr. Chairman, this is dishonesty. I've been quiet in this hearing because I want to be safe of all the things the way it's supposed to be. But for this CEO to come here and tell us that the HR manager is higher than the Chief Operating Officer of Aslamita, that the CFO here is lower than the HR manager in Mita, that is dishonesty.
Equal work, equal pay.
It's honesty.
Is that?
We should accept that. We should accept that. For me, that would be the end of me.
Mr. Chairman, no, Senator Twain, you have to accept that.
This is not safe for the core.
Senator Twain, Senator Twain, one minute. Mr. Chairman. It's in our hands. Mr. Chairman, not only that the CEO has been dishonored, the HR manager has been dishonored. Because she put her hand up and recognize herself as part of the tier, the first three. When even on this very organic, very broad, she's not about three on it. So, even the HR has been dishonest. Not just the CEO, yes, a very, very broad. Look at it. Yes, eh? Mr. CEO, Mr. CEO, you, you. Mr. CEO. The three most senior officials of the company were texting, indicating credit, constantly in the MDA. Are you aware of that?
I believe it could not be verified that those three positions are in the MDA. I'm not going to argue with you on that. So, the three positions you spoke about, I expect. I've got out of my six people, my apologies, out of the eleven people sitting below me.
Of the eleven, who are the first three?
Can I tell you? So firstly, myself, I'm the CEO. Then Anthony Cooken, he is the Chief Operating Officer. He's an expatriate.
He's a second?
No, I'm just, I'm just reading it. I can go through anyone.
I said the first three.
They're on the same level. I need to start with somebody, Honorable. I can't start.
No, no, Chairman, stop it. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, sir, sir. This is the Senate. You will not deliberately be invasive. You can submit an official document that carries you as CEO number one, Chief Operational Officer as number two, Chief Financial Officer as number three. This, these are the first three ranking official according to your own organogram here for Aslamita. Why is it difficult? Why are you evading?
My answer.
Yeah, please.
You referred to three pages. I can't put everything on one page. So, that's the first three pages of that.
Colleen, I think we, we, we have, we have constructively, we have occasion sufficiently on this issue of the five, three most senior officials. Now, I pose the obligation to invesively follow to prove your wrong. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, when the people come and decide to be invasive, they say like this, they knowing, they mean the MDA that getting the authority to operate Liberia, it must be a conspiracy. I've a colleague here raise an issue about the law and this position. He insisted that not in the MDA. And the colleague did not know that reference in the MDA, they will have come across as though he did not know why he brought before the Senate. Let the CEO there, by the guidance of the lawyer, tell us what of that provision that come from the first three officials in the company is not part of the MDA. Because the lawyer is here. He may invasive, deliberately.
In addition, bizarrely, our bizarrely.
Man.
Yeah, in addition, bizarrely, we have a big claim. And one of the team, when I hear the Minister come on, I comply, issue all labor battle and other thing. But this time, I think in addition, the initial labor should improve the benefit of that position. They can choose about the three we want. That point should not set up a position because why? That's the law. We can be here, here, we tell our colleagues of who's the key is here when he has a given. We are shareholder. And the members who come into, we want to have one share in the event. So, yeah, so that's a good issue.
That's why, that's why I said. And, and excuse me, Colleen, that's why I said. That's why I said we have sufficiently discussed this issue. The Senate will respect its committee rules and decide on it. We're respecting our committee rule. So, uh, you can continue your comments on the other items, on the other issues.
Honorable, since we are, I'd like to, if you'll allow me, please, I'd like to just explain a little bit of context on the expert and the local issue, if you'll allow me, please.
On the issue of the first three most.
Overall.
Excuse me, please. Before you go, the first issue we started with was the plant. And one of our colleagues was standing here and just, he had a concern. So, let him try quickly.
So, uh, thank you.
In the presentation of the Minister of Mines, he said that you have commissioned a plant, but the plant, the concentrator, has not been completed yet. Is that true? I can explain that commissioning, uh, Honorable Senator. Commissioning starts with testing your equipment. I would have loved this thing to have run a month or two ago. So, we've started with commissioning the crusher. Started the crusher, we're running it. We started the belts. We've started commissioning some of the, some of the, uh, equipment in the plant. This is a massive plant, Honorable. That's why, at big margin, the, the biggest processing plant, myself as a metallurgist has worked on. This is a big, big, big plant with many, many thousands of pieces of equipment. A plant like this, and anybody that's, that's worked on commissioning something like that will tell you that something like this, it's not like a new car you buy and push a button and start it. Commissioning process of dry commissioning, testing your stuff, wet commissioning. So, I can honestly and sadness say, we haven't fully commissioned it to the end. That is.
So, how long do we have to go before it's going to full operation?
We, it's difficult for me to tell you exactly, not because it's something I want to hide, but it's just because it's such an enormous task. And of, no, it definitely, we want to be, we want to be in full operation. There's three lines, uh, Honorable Senator, if you let me, if you allow me to explain. So, this plant consists, I'm going to summarize it very shortly, of a crusher, a big mineral size of crusher that crush down the material, puts it into silos, goes into three big, uh, mills, uh, semi autogenous grinding mills. Each one of these mills uses seven mega watts of power. Two of these mills uses more power than the entire Liberia together. So, it's a massive, massive, massive operation. So, all of the things, instrumentation that goes with it, we in the process of commissioning. I'm, I'm saying this.
Yeah, I, Chairman, energy community, I forgot now. You said two or eight uses more power than all Liberia?
Yes.
How much power?
It will be in the order of sixteen megawatt of power.
You know how much power Liberia?
I believe it's an, I know it isn't that.
No, no, you just, you lying again. You are, you are misinforming the public. So, just correct it. You are, no, 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 you are misleading. Sir, sir. Discuss what you're producing. What you just stated and the figure you give, Liberia uses more power than that. So, let's correct that point. All right? So, no, so, no, so, so my issue is, is that, yeah, so, so we don't look up to increased production yet? That's the issue.
Honorable, by end of quarter three, we want to be running. The end of Q three, we want to be running at full speed. Yes, yes, now. We, we, we busy starting up the stuff, but it's a, it's an enormous task, Honorable, and that's, that's where I'd like more senior people to come and visit, come and see what we're doing.
So, so what's the, I'm a producer now, and by, so when we increase it, give us, give us some ideas, I will increase the production.
Honorable, so to explain what, what we currently producing is, is DSL. Uh, that does not go through. That doesn't.
So, how long will you continue to produce the DSO? Why will you go to the hard ore to use a concentrator? Because I think you have five million tons per year now. Who are you now?
Correct, Honorable, we actually doing better this year, last, uh, than last year. I believe here today, we're standing at three point nine million.
How much?
Four million. We own four million produced already now, which is already more than entire last year.
One year from now, where will you be across the middle?
Twenty, twenty million, Honorable. Yes, Honorable. And we, and we are hoping fully to be all. No, no. The concentration will add on to that, Honorable. Let, let me just explain. Honorable said in one year from now, we will be running in one, and so just answer it.
The question was, have you completed the process? We should know. When, when have they completed? You don't know.
No, I said end of quarter.
So, uh, let me, my last question.
So, Honorable, just to, like, just, just to repeat what the CFO said, so originally, the, to get it, to get it to fifteen million would have been one point two billion. That would have been, uh, I apologize, one point four billion, my apologies. The one point four billion was, was the estimate. What we have actually spent until thirty, until thirty-one December, uh, twenty twenty-four was one point two. Our estimate now to get it to the twenty, twenty million tons is one point eight billion.
Okay. Yeah. E- excuse me, Senator, I'm sorry. One of our colleagues behind the Senator.
Are you, are you, is a follow-up question to this question?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for your recognition. We listen together, but we don't talk together. Uh, when I got in, I think the Ministry of Public Works were in speech. And from what I got from the estimation was, Aslamita had not been compliant. And then I listened also to the Bureau of Concession there. It was somehow ambiguous on grounds that he said there was a investigation so we done on the pollution at the mine. But the team responsible had not come out of an investigative report. Then again, he said, Aslamita suggested that you revisit the, the pollution. It confused me a little bit. Investigative report had not yet emerged. At least if you are told, the investigative team had told Aslamita these are false and they challenge it eventually, then they will suggest. But in, in luxury, my, the core issue that I ask you, I mean, that I want to contribute is the Mita issue from all indications. In order for one to even erect a building on our law, Zona Law of Liberia, the Ministry of Public Work have been notified. If the Ministry of, uh, Public Works says in this hearing that she's not in a know, then there is a problem. Besides that, the issue of land managers, in every organization, they are structured by department. The head, the administration, the financial or who's it depends, but they are always three persons in land or four persons. So, if you are investing in a country, that the country in which you are investing, specifically in a particular county where there's natural resources being provided by gold, come out of an issue or search and you know further where you still want to operate in that area, you have to be sincere. I believe when you say the fact of this over body, then we will see that you, you really want to do business in fair practice. But from the conversation, it shows to me that the argument our colleagues have had or continue to have is legit. So, we want you to be sincere to this over body. If you can respond to this question instantly, you can consult and tell all the truth, because we don't want to be afraid of you that when you requesting for another MDA, that you will be rejected on ground that we are afraid because you don't see the truth. Thank you very much.
There's observation daughter, observation daughter. No, let finish, please. We're commenting on other takes, the senators, uh, uh, if you finish, then we can engage. Engage all the witnesses, yeah?
Thank you, Honorable. We were, we were still, I was going to make a closing comment on the, on the, uh, dispute between the, the local force, but I, I propose to move on from that. Okay on that?
So, if this you finish.
I'm finished. Thank you, Honorable.
Okay, senators, you, you have listed all the issues listed. To hear, to hear, you finish. You also listen to our, uh, colleagues from the other, from the other side of the government. You listen to all of them. Uh, it's now time for, uh, question, that's superior. Senator, uh, uh, well, uh, 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 MLT, you are responding to a senator, the senator is asking a question. And when they finish, when they finish before you respond. If you want to address somebody, you address the chair and the members of the joint committee. And let us, at a time, because. And let us, at a time, because we have a, alright, thank you very much, colleagues?
Yes.
Chairman, thank you. Well, I think the, the CEO says it's done.
My apologies, well, I misunderstood you, but with respect, honorable senator, I was done with that point. I didn't mean we were done with everything, my apologies.
Anyway, your presentation.
No, 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 I mean, it was done with that point to move on. Sorry.
Okay, go ahead. Yes.
My, my mistake.
All, all of the things the man left there, yes.
My apologies, no, I didn't, I'm done with, I mean, with the previous point, I'm sorry, Senator. Uh, the next point I've, I've made, and I also made thing to help remember on what's been raised, was on the, uh, the hospital and the hospital in Yekepa. Uh huh, that's right, so, honorable, what I can tell you this is, we are currently busy with huge renovations in the Yekepa Hospital, and there's more coming for Bukana as well. I'll invite anybody to come and visit and see, we've just finished additional work in the Yekepa Hospital. We do realize that we need to do a lot more.
After how many years? After how many years of operations?
Oh, it's twenty years. Honorable, you are right, I'm not gonna deny that, I'm not gonna argue with, I can only tell you what, what we are doing now. I would have liked us to be a lot, a lot further than where we are, no debate, no argument on that. But honestly, the real intent is to continue, there's a lot of work been done since last year that we've joined. It's still not even at the speed that we wanna do it, but what I can tell you for sure is the work that has started last year, the equipment that we're putting in place here, please just come and have a look, come and have a look what we're doing at Yekepa Hospital. Uh, Bukana, we've started, but there's a lot more to follow. I mean, we're gonna talk about the schools, I'm not even proud of what we have or what's doing at the schools now, but at least, uh, the, the program has been approved, there's a lot of, there's a lot of developments ongoing as we speak now, the people are working in that hospital. Uh, may I refer, may I refer to my honorable, uh, head of external relations to add on to that, please?
Is that all the health facility?
Sorry, honorable.
You stay talking about the health facility, the, the hospital.
Thank you, honorable chairman. So the, uh, for health facilities, Asseptor has been improving the health facilities since we started. So this is not the first one, it's January, this is the second. Health facilities have to go through various stages of upgrades. The latest one that we are undergoing now, in order to track that we are, where we want to be, we have requested the Ministry of Health to come and check after we've done everything. We wanna go to a, on level three referral hospital. Because always when people see the facility, they say, oh, it should be this way, it should be that way, but we wanna be in accordance with government standards. So all the improvements that the CEO mentioned, purchasing equipment, hiring additional twenty nine staff specialists, they are getting ambulances and so forth, whatever, it's not the first time the hospital have had ambulances. So it's not, it's not just now, it's, it's an ongoing process. So, um, and we are in close, uh, contact with the Ministry of Health, who are vetting everything we are doing as we go along. Now, uh, but over and above that, uh, in our communities, we have not only focused on our health facilities, we've gone ahead to support community health. Uh, the hospital that was mentioned, the Sekimpa Hospital, we've, we've come, we've contributed two million dollars for the construction of a new hospital. Just, just on, just on two mil, sorry, two million US dollars, US dollars, just on Monday. We paid the last trends of our contribution, we're to four hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Uh, yeah. So you have many things to respond to.
Exactly.
Yeah, so work cannot take all of the time, if you emphasize, give indication on why you don't run an item, because you said that many things to respond.
It was about community health, honorable chairman, yeah. So, uh, the specific mention was that the company has not constructed health facilities in the communities, that's what our chairman referred to.
So it's where?
The, the, there are two.
That you have constructed?
That construction is ongoing, one is the Bukana Government Hospital.
No, are we talking about the war in Liberia?
Oh, no, oh, you mentioned, the, the CEO already mentioned, in, in Yekepa and Bukana. So always, after this phase is done.
The question is, in twenty years, have Aslameta constructed and have a functional hospital? What are in Yekepa or in Bukana, question?
Yes, not constructed, but renovated and upgraded, the facilities are there.
Which hospital?
The current one that was handed over from, uh, from, from, from the Lanko.
The same hospital we went to as a senate team in twenty twenty two, that caused us not to extend Aslameta tear, tear, uh, agreement, is that what the same hospital is talking about?
There have been significant improvement there, honorable.
Can we go there tomorrow?
Actually, when we responded to the, uh, the, the chairman's request, we invited you to come and see in our letter.
So, interestingly, if, I don't wanna sound like I'm judgmental. I think everything I'm listening to now in progress and this, they are all, uh, publicity, publicity stunt to attach up into a tear agreement. You bear here twenty two years, you can't construct one hospital. You can construct one housing facility or renovate it properly for your workers. On the eve of your tear agreement, you are in progress, you are in process, you are in process, bingo. Mister CEO, I think he has made the, the, the addition you wanted him to make, you still have the issue of the recycle, the issue of the.
On, on a herb, on a herb issue, because the law at the end, article, honor article E. Concessionaire shall construct, it didn't say renovate. Shall construct, maintain and operate her facilities in the concession area. It didn't say her facility. And shall install, maintain and use mowing, her devices and equipment and practice mowing her procedure and precautions in accordance accepted by international standard. To that, first of all, I will not ask whether you have constructed a hospital you have now, so that is a violation of the MDA alone. The one that you have, uh, renovated, can you tell us here, what are the mowing equipment? Dallas's machine, CT scan, MRI, those are mowing equipment, are they there? Do you perform procedure like operation or simple operation in any hospital around the concession area that you have not constructed, that don't exist? After twenty years, and this, huh? No.
Why?
They're done, but here, here we are, they're still transferring people inside everybody, but sorry.
Mister CEO?
Honorable, thank you, so the Kepa Hospital, I can tell you that it's to very good standard. I'm not a medical doctor, as for what exactly equipment in there, do you have a list of equipment there?
Okay, no, um.
May I, honorable?
So they, they, yeah, Kudi, I think you, you start your point. And I said, you have read it, it's clear, and the way they are responding.
Record, let the record show that is a major violation.
The record was shown.
Let the record show.
This boy has spoken all day, and I think our role here, besides in addition to our senate role, is also to protect our interest as government shareholder. Now, for a company to sit here and tell us they have an investment of one point four billion or one point two billion, it fluctuates depending on who, the audience, I should, depending on the audience, then the amount changes. So let's say one plus billion, for, for easy, uh, easy reference. You've constructed that without the involvement of the Ministry of Public Works. I don't even sho, I'm not even sure if the Ministry of Land and Mines or Finance were part of your importation and your materials you brought in. So at the end of the day, you come to us as a shareholder and tell us I invested this when there is no verification from land ministries and agencies. This is not a Republic of, uh, it's a Republic of Liberia. You have a concession in this country. And I think it's, it, it, it's a gross violation that you go and construct such a massive plant, as you explained, without the involvement of our ministries, our land ministries and agencies. And you just come and gave us a paper and say, when you in, informed the world that you are opening that plant, honestly, except for today, I thought you were using that paper where to start cleaning your iron ore and shipping it. Just to find out that you took the President of Liberia and other government officials to Yekepa for a plan that is still under construction. And for ever the impression that you are about to dedicate a plan to start operations. Now, Mister Chairman, this is a serious issue that they are reporting to the world that they have spent over a billion dollars and there is no verification from our ministry. I mean, for me, there is nothing but, you, you say you go and get the Ministry of Health to look at the clinic. So all wrong, you get the Ministry of Public Works to see your plants. So when you come to clinic, then you get help, when you come to plant, then you give a public work. Are you telling us that there's no qualified Liberian engineer that would have been assigned by the Ministry of, uh, 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 Public Works as a librarian government engineer to, to, to monitor your progress, or they, they, they construct of the plant? I think this is great, it's great.
My information is, the institution in the Republic of Liberia that cloth with the authority when it comes to import and export and regulate is LRA. And I believe with all the accusation, we need to invite LRA to give a record whether this company, I mean, the, the company have ever imported, and if the importer agrees to erect this, whether on duty pay or duty fee, based on the agreement, because the allegation is the Public Works Ministry is not in the know. So which one of the institution that is in the know is where we are facing, this is my, uh, that's my information.
Instead of, instead of continuing, instead of continuing the comments or the issues, because, uh, we just continue to go around the issue. Let give, let give, let give the senators opportunity to discuss with you. Okay. We ask Senator Nukwe.
Thank you. So, uh, honorable, Mister CEO, you, you, during your presentation, you indicated that the cost, every cost component of your, uh, concentration plan was validated by Revenue Authority, is that what I heard you say?
Correct, Senator.
How can Revenue Authority be the one to validate a construction plan other than the Ministry of Public Works? How is that possible?
My, also my CEO. Uh, if I can just clarify, honorable, so the, 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 the cost of construction and the investments in the phase two expansion plans is the slowest effect of our tax returns to the LRA every year. So it's the slowest to the, the Liberian Revenue Authority every year, and the Liberian Revenue Authority.
So it's based on why you disclose to the Revenue Authority? So it's not being independently validated? Okay, so I'd like to, yeah, I just wanted to get that clear.
Can I, may I respond?
You just said it is, is on the basis of why you disclose. Beyond that, I'm moving on now, because others have to speak, I just wanted to get that clear. I'd like to know what is the total investment up to current? My question is that you said, you, I keep hearing phase two, phase two expansion, phase two expansion, you also say phase one before phase two. So what is the total investment by Aslameta up to current?
It's over three billion dollars.
It's over three billion, I'd like to know, have you recouped any of the investment over, over twenty years?
Uh, honorable, I'm, I'm not being evasive, but can you just, what, what you mean by recoup?
Have you recovered, have you recovered any investment for the twenty years?
So we, we have been extracting the iron ore, exporting the iron ore, yes, we've been operating.
How much revenue have you generated over the twenty two years?
I don't have that off the top of my head, honorable, I have verified here, we, we prepared it for a separate forum.
But you have the total investment on top of your head, you don't have the total revenue on top of your head.
Yeah, yes, honorable.
So how many tons of iron ore have you exported over twenty two years?
I don't have that off the top of my head, I have to verify here, we prepared it earlier.
Oh, thank you, uh, I think, uh, I think it's fair, you know, I think it's fair that, uh, some of the officials of the government who are attached to the Aslameta be a part of the conversation, and so I'd like to begin with the Lenzemans, I, I, from what I have listened to from the Aslameta folks, I think they will give us, uh, limited information. An information that tends to expose a lot of details we want, we not get from them. So then, uh, it's about fair that we, we get, uh, our officials who represent us involved. Uh, Mister Minister, uh, honorable Nukwe asks an important information. And you are an integral part, uh, a component of, for, uh, this agreement as much as portability is concerned, as much as monetary is concerned. So we have always been concerned about the country being short changed. And the Main Road Development Agreement actually originated at the Lenzemans Ministry, not necessarily originated from you as a person, but from the ministry. And if there's any other agreement that comes here after, most likely the ministry is going to be a pivotal, gonna play a pivotal role. So can you give us? Can you give us an answer to that question? I mean, if you can, if you want, uh, time to put the documents together, willing to, to look at that, can you say definitively, well?
Thank you, honorable Senator. The, I'm sure my colleague here will speak to the fiscal aspect of it. But I like to say this, and because this is a public hearing, and we assume say nothing but the truth, I would like to say that if Aslameta, and it's surprising to hear that within one year, Aslameta, the concessionaire, and let me say this, we want, as a ministry, we want Aslameta and all other concessionaires in this country to succeed in their projects. There is no doubt about that, as far as our commitment as a country and government is concerned. But what is important is that, and we as a ministry, we are surprised to hear that within one year, Aslameta will have ramped up production to twenty million, when over the last years, they have not even reached five million tons. to twenty million, when over the last years, they have not even reached five million tons per annum. I think it's important for you as a decision maker before going any other instrument for, for amendment or other way, a year later to, to load this.
Actually, oh, we are, we are tennis competitors here. Understandably, we do not have the same expertise. You are the expert. When you sign the agreement here, we do not renegotiate the agreement. The burden, that technical responsibility rests on your shoulders. You cannot pass it on to us because you guide us as we deliberate and rectify or refuse to rectify. You guide us, so it originates from you. And one of the things that we've been concerned about in this country is the fact that we do not get our corresponding share of, for the minerals being extracted from our country. Before Mita, you had Ramco. Mita has stayed, I think, almost twenty-two years. It is expected that Mita will, will be pursuing an extension or a new mineral development agreement. And hopefully, they will stay at least fifty years on, on this, uh, I mean, on this park in Nimbah. Fifty years plus twenty-some years on Al Ramco, that will be almost significantly eighty years. I had the opportunity of listening to President Musilina of Uganda. And he, he, he's South African and he will confirm what I'm saying. He said, in his country Uganda, iron ore is not exported, steel is exported. In other words, the continent is gravitating away from being just a place for supplying foreign markets to now becoming a place of industrialization. It can just be gold grab because it's easier to take than to manufacture, to give our ore more value. The way to do that and to give our currency value is to say they will expand. We keep talking about jobs. But there are few places we can get a job from. That's only extracted industry. You got Firestone. Firestone been here for more than seventy-some years. Even surgical gloves, they can manufacture. And nobody want to say it because they don't want to get on the path of the Americans. Because that's an American company. The same thing with Mita. So for seventy-five to eighty years, all we have to do will be sign an agreement that will provide for them to extract iron ore. So the question to you is, with what you've already discussed by, you presiding over the iron ore sector of the country. My question is, will you affix your signature to a contractual agreement for Mita that you submit to this place that exclude giving added value to our mineral?
A number of
I got one more question then, Senator.
A number of factors will have to be considered. And of course, value addition, as you rightly said, Honorable Senator, is the way African countries are looking at. And of course, because of our huge potential in iron ore, we as a nation will have to get to the point where we say, yes, we need certain percentage of what is extracted should be used for value addition and all of that. But this is something that we will have to consider as a country from the policy point of view. But I'm not shifting the burden over to you. But what I'm saying is that as we are looking at the current investment, the, how, what, how far we go beyond with this investment depends on the level of compliance that we can have a concessioner to, 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 to achieve under the current M D.
Okay, thank you. You see, one of the reasons why we are struggling to lay our hands on the detail is related to the, the earlier question, Honorable Slow, uh, Honorable, uh, the long task. That is, what kind of representation do we have at the managerial or at the etymology level? From all indication, Mita has indicated to us over the twenty years that they haven't gotten even, they haven't realized profit. And it's inconceivable that you will stay for twenty-some years mining, you will not realize profit and strive for extension in part two, three years to the expiration of your mineral development agreement. You have brought a concentration plant. And if the government were to say, we're not going to renew your agreement, then you start going around Western capitals to sanction the government and start doing all kinds of things. Uh, 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 which in my opinion tells me they believe that whatever the case is, this government is going to extend. They don't have a choice. They're going to, there's no, it's inconceivable you afford one point eight billion dollars a year, two years, three years to the expiration of your agreement. Except you believe that they do not have a choice. They can just call the president and compare him to sign. We cannot be in this kind of state indefinitely, you know? And you have a major role to play. So I would watch for the kind of agreement you send here, not just for Mita. It means like we have to be in specific position, it has to be in a mineral development agreement that this specific position must be occupied by Liberians so that we do not have to ask the very investor or the concession, the, the one who has the concession to tell us why he's going there. And you know, my, my question, thank you, my second question. You know, when you were at the Komasi, you were at the Komasi place there, right? Or about a, a year ago, I had the opportunity of flying to Komasi to see the, the mines that you were managing. Or, and I was astonished. The entire mine there at Komasi that I've visited is managed by Canadians one hundred percent. And that's in national, they say. But what astonished me most is the manner in which you, I was amazed you managed that with the folks that were there. I did not see one container room that people live in. All of the structures I saw, I drank even, uh, a bottle of soft drink at your place. Where, soft drink, only soft drink. For the record. And, and, and I was really moved. I felt disappointed that in Liberia, we will have workers who worked very hard on the mine come back to be in makeshift containers. I've never saw that in Ghana. And for Mita, you had the opportunity of having structures that just needed to be renovated. So my question to you is, oh, twenty years on, do you still have workers staying in containers at the plantation?
My, my answer, sir. So, thank you, thank you, Honorable Senator, for this, this question. I, I'm not mandated to spoke about my previous employment, obviously, but I know what you're talking about. So if you let me explain a little bit about that. Luckily, nobody has mentioned where I worked before. But when I started there, I'm talking about myself. It started with new plant, new operations where they had, at the time, more than seventy expatriates. It's true, where we are today, we sit with a lot of expatriates, delta American eighty. The truth of that is, and that's what I want to tell you, because I've been through that process. I've been in charge of taking that previous role that you talk about into the Ghanaian, uh, uh, localization. I did it. I appointed it. And therefore, I can talk with authority on this subject. The fact that those people are there is because it was a well laid out plan. That is the same well laid out plan that Asalometa has got in here. It is not our intention to just keep running with expatriates. Our first major priority is to make sure that this investment, and by the way, the concentrator plant is a way of upgrading and adding value. We're taking a concentrate of forty-four, forty-six percent, which is not saleable in the market, worth nothing in the market, upgrading it to a product of plus sixty percent. So we are putting in a value-added product into the market from something that does not have value as it is. This is a highly sophisticated technical plant, highly sophisticated. The fact that we've got expatriates running it is not a racist move or a sly or a sleek move to try and get Liberians out of work. It's an open, honest, real, hardworking attempt to make sure that we get the best people in the world from our own, or regional equipment manufacturers to, to make sure this plant is running. Because this is not just, it's not just a screen and a belt. This is a highly, highly, highly sophisticated plant. That's why you get people from all over the world. It's not just a bunch of South Africans sitting there. It's people from all over the world who, where these things are coming from. And they have to hand over and train their skills very, very quickly. It does not open overnight. And that's my own passionate pet subject, trying to make sure that we take our local talent, which is great, uptrain them, upscale them to get to a similar result, Honorable, of what you're referring. And I, I'm taking that personally and passionately to see people being trained up. A few of you have visited our vocational training center. You've seen what we've done there. You've seen how we've taken. Just four months ago, we've appointed people who had zero education. After three years of training up, whilst we picked them and were training them, we were giving them salaries, we were giving them housing, we were feeding them. They are now some of the best trained. There's a hundred and sixty Liberian trained artisans are some of the best trained artisans in Africa. That I can tell you. And those people are being employed.
The, the concern you raise about the structure that we're responding to there.
I'm coming, I'm coming. So it was a double question, Honorable. Okay, so you want me to continue faster?
Continue? Con- the container?
So, okay, so in terms of the housing, you all know the place better than me. You've seen how it was when Ramco was running. You've seen how it looked, you see how it looked after the civil war. Everything was dilapidated in those houses, but some of them, the structures are still fairly good. So if we say we renovate these houses, it's the best, most efficient, effective way to take the structure and renovate it. And that's the reason why we're renovating some of these old houses. I'm coming, sir. So, so in Yekapah.
In the M T A, there wasn't any point where the renovation work of those structures that are employed?
Honorable, let, let, let me tell you what we have done. So what we have done was that out of the total houses that's available in Yekapah, that was the old houses and ruins, some of them were for without roofs, we've until now, over the past twenty years, renovated five hundred and fifty-two of the one-four-two-seven. That's Yekapah. Bukana, out of the three-one-four that was there, we've renovated two hundred and twelve.
The caution is not what you have renovated. How many container houses do you have?
So, so total we have now, if I understand, Honorable, there's what we have now, there's continuous renovation that we do now of thirty-six.
No, the container fabric houses you have in Yekapah.
Well, can I explain? Okay, let's explain those houses. The problem we sit with is.
Sir, how many fabric houses do you have in Yekapah?
My point is, I ask you one direct question. Do you have people living in containers, free pack, free pa- uh, uh, free pack?
There are people living in containers that we've asked to move out. They refuse to do so and I'd like to explain it, please. Please, I beg you, let me explain it, Honorable. Yeah. Yeah. And that, that, you've got a, Honorable, please. You've got a good point and let me explain it, please, because you've got a very valid point. And we sit with the problem and that problem is that problem is my, your problem is my problem. So I want to explain it, please, I beg you. So, so Honorable, we, we sit now with three thousand employees there in Yekapah. I, I don't have, there's, there's five hundred thousand. So the vast majority of people, we don't have houses for. These people are getting housing allowance. So they're getting a housing allowance. So we sit there and it's our members, it's our own people. They're sitting in some, what we call a trade seat, a hundred man camp. I'm trying to answer the question.
I'm a chairman, I'm a chairman, I'm a chairman. My, my, my last question has to do with the, the river and it's going to halt. You're an S R, right? Yes, that, oh, I that is last question, that is last question I asked you. Uh, you know, before, 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 uh, before Asalometa took over, there was yeah, listen. Excuse me. I, 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 I want to indicate here, all of us are aware, this year we started three o'clock. We are about six o'clock now. Three, four, four, five, five, six, three hours with the year. And we are asking the intelligence and senators to please cooperate with us and let us reschedule this hearing. And so our witnesses, you have started. You will remain honorable. You know that when you come in for your information adequately, you have to please bring a word set of facts of the three most senior officials, the one that's supposed to be at Liberia. You're talking about the body health facility you're supposed to control. You're talking about the mineral resource recycle hundred thousand supposed to be dedicated to the Minnesota mines. You're talking about transaction prices with full disclosure. And then, uh, say you haven't folded or concluded all the extra costs of the concentrator and all of its components that led you to one point four now. So please, you will remain honorable. And this hearing will be rescheduled next week. We'll be informed. The committee with consult, the joint committee with consult, and decide on an appropriate day. And we'll be communicated with you. And then, uh, please, when you are informed, come. Our colleagues that are from the executives, you know that these hearings cannot be conducted in your absence because all of us are chasing the same objective. So you will also be informed. I want to thank all of you for your full cooperation. For this time that we stay here, thank you for coming. With the authority investor, this hearing is nearby. So before you close, before you close, I want our Bureau of Concession. That Bureau was established to monitor and evaluate the concession grant. So when you're coming back for the second time, come with your full information and report on Mita. Please, because you were established to monitor and evaluate all the concessions. Let me be careful.